All right, we're gonna get started. Thank you very much, everybody, for attending the July Library Commission meeting. And I am going to call the meeting to order. David Cahill.
Here.
Andy Upkind.
Here.
Fred Engard.
Here.
Eve Goldberg.
Here.
Brooke Green.
Here.
Paul Heavenridge.
Here.
Sarah is absent tonight.
Her husband's birthday. They're in the house.
Barbara McKenzie.
Here.
Peter Poles.
Here.
And Kim, I do not speak yet. Right, thank you very much. Just a couple announcements. We have talked about meeting to discuss the goals for fiscal year 26, '27. And we wanted to get started pretty early because the staff starts thinking about the next fiscal year very early. We, though, are going to be having a strategic planning process. So it probably, I think, our goal setting, Eric and I were talking, and I think the goal setting probably should be included in that strategic planning process. So we're gonna not necessarily get started in September with the strategic planning, but as the staff is talking about next year, we're certainly gonna get involved, but it's not gonna be as formal as a goal setting might be until we get the strategic planning process moving. And let's see. Something else. So I will move on to public appearances. Do we have any members of the public who wish to say something? To the commission. Anybody online?
Nobody's online.
Okay. We got one public comment, which you all have seen. So we'll move on to we'll move on to item four, which is action items by resolution. And we have some we have some two resolutions this after this evening, the Disability, Pride and Inclusion Month resolution. Do I have someone who wants to?
Disability, Pride and Inclusion. Disability, Pride and Inclusion. Whereas disability pride recognizes the strength, resilience, and achievements of people with disabilities, celebrating their contributions to our community. And whereas people with disabilities have made significant advancements in many fields, demonstrating their talents, skills, and determination. And whereas our community acknowledges the ongoing work required to create a more inclusive environment, ensuring equal opportunities and accessibility for all. And whereas a diverse society enriches our community, bringing joy, understanding, and mutual respect among all members. Whereas the staff and patrons of Sonoma County Library commit to celebrate disability pride by recognizing and honoring the achievements and contributions of people with disabilities through events, programs, and initiatives. Promote accessibility by continuously working to improve accessibility in public spaces, services, and opportunities, ensuring that all community members can participate fully. Advocate for inclusion by supporting policies and practices that foster inclusion, equity, and respect for people with disabilities. Educate and raise awareness by providing education and awareness programs that highlight the importance of diversity and the benefits of an inclusive society. Foster a supportive community by encouraging a culture of support, understanding, and celebration of the diverse experiences and perspectives within our community. Therefore, be it resolved that the Sonoma County Library Commission honors July 2025 as Disability, Pride, and Inclusion Month, which served as a commitment to ongoing efforts to make our community a welcoming and inclusive place for everyone, recognizing the joys and strengths that diversity brings.
I'm gonna take that as a motion. Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Engard. Any commissioner comments? I'll say this means a lot to me. My sister was on the spectrum when she was born. She's brilliant. She keeps satellites in the sky for the government, but she didn't speak until she was about four years old. And the library, and we were a Department of Defense family, and we moved around a lot. And the people in the libraries were the people who were kind to her. And I think helped her become a member of a member of society. And so I I really like that we celebrate this. We celebrate it every month, every year, but I think that this is really this is really important. And I personally was born without an ear. And so I'm also part of the disabled community. So I really appreciate that libraries are very sensitive to to people like that. So I'm going to, unless somebody else has any other comments, I'm going to take a roll on that.
And sure, or a public comment? Ask for public comments?
Is there something from the public?
Well, if people.
Aren't we having staff reports? Any members of the public who wish to comment?
We have one member of the public in attendance, and personally, nobody.
Then I will continue to ask. Thank you. Commissioner Cahill?
Yes.
Commissioner Upkind?
Yes.
Commissioner Engard?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldberg?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Heavenridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKenzie?
Yes.
Mr. Poles?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
We have it unanimous. Thank you very much. And thanks for bringing it to us again this year. It's always good to be reminded. And then we have another resolution, Free People Read Freely. And thank you to the staff for what you do for the people in our community. I know you've got stories to tell. And we could probably take an hour of the commission's time to make sure that everybody in the community knows what you do. I'm back from the American Library Association, and one of the things that we noted is that you all don't brag about yourselves or your work enough. Fix that. That's good. That's good. Okay, so moving on to Free People Read Freely resolution. It's Independence Day in two days, and I think that this is a really important time to to salute what we're doing in terms of helping people get the information they need for all of their things. So Mr. Green, you were going to? I'm sorry, Commissioner Goldberg, who you were going to? Would you like to move it?
That'd be great.
Resolution. Resolution, Free People Read Freely. Whereas in July, we celebrate Independence Day, when the colonies declared in the July 4, 1776 Declaration of Independence, that they would throw off the yoke of British rule. And whereas the first free public lending library in continuous existence in this country was founded in 1790 with a donation of books from Benjamin Franklin. And whereas ever since, public libraries have been on a trajectory to increase access, eliminate barriers, and overcome systemic obstacles to literacy and free access to knowledge and information. And whereas intellectual freedom is under pressure from many fronts, with libraries throughout the country limiting access to materials for political and ideological reasons. And whereas the Sonoma County Library has repeatedly affirmed its commitment to the Library Bill of Rights and free and unfettered access to library materials, and has declared itself a book sanctuary. And whereas challenging the freedom to read and banning books adversely impacts people from historically marginalized backgrounds, whose communities are often underrepresented in literature. And whereas the premise that free people read freely embodies the freedoms envisioned in the Declaration of Independence and the subsequent Bill of Rights of the United States Constitution. Therefore, be it resolved that the Sonoma County Library Commission celebrates the freedom to read and the concept that free access to knowledge is a fundamental value that must be cherished and protected. Free people, read freely.
Do I have a second?
I'll second them. We'll all second that.
I'd like to unanimous second. I'm gonna give it to Andy because I saw his end first. Do we have any public comment? Commissioner?
A little comment?
Yeah.
Some public comments. In the paragraph where it talks about challenging the freedom to read affects adversely people from historically marginalized backgrounds, totally, totally true. I just want to say that it impacts everybody, and it's screwed up for everybody.
Other comments? Okay, then I will take. And I also want to thank Ray for, Ray Holling, for writing most of this. It's a very impressive phrase. Let me give you our thanks. Commissioner Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Upkind?
Yes.
Mr. Engard?
Yes.
Mr. Goldberg?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Heavenridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKenzie?
Yes.
Mr. Poles?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Thank you very much. And happy Independence Day. And, you know, we are the oldest constitutional democracy in the world, and let's hope that it stays that way. And let's work to make sure that it happens. I think that we are on the front line. And now we're moving into presentations. The Disability Advocacy Team presentation. We're looking forward to this very much.
Okay, can you all hear me? Okay, good evening, Chair Doyle, Director Tabo, and Commissioners. I am very happily presenting today on behalf of and with the Disability Advocacy Team at the Sonoma County Library. With me, I have Phil Hoff, Windsor Library Branch Manager, Carrie King, the Vastable Library Library Associate, and Northwest Santa Rosa Library Library Associate, Grayne Cor. There are more members in this room that aren't standing with us. We have Rono, who's a part of our team, and Rachel. I'm sure you recognize her from this photo. I recognize that not all of our commissioners or the public may be aware that Sonoma County Library has internal teams as a part of our organization. So when I say we are a part of the Disability Advocacy Team, or we call it DAT sometime, that might need some explanation. So Sonoma County Library Teams are standing committees comprising staff stakeholders across the organization who work together to further library services. The library has approximately 22 teams, and they either advocate, advise, or make decisions about operations, programs, resources, and management. Each team has a charge, a set number or allocation of team members and classification, an authority, and a set meeting time. Some of our active groups that you may have seen out and about are the Queer Advocacy Team, organizing pride events, for our Latinx Advocacy Team attending Loceum. The Disability Advocacy Team formed in 2024 to determine services, infrastructure, and resources necessary to meet the diverse needs of all members of Sonoma County's library, or Sonoma County's disabled community. One in four adults in the United States have a disability, and this is a group that any person can become a part of at any time. As a team, we are prioritizing accessibility and inclusivity and making sure that everyone has access to the library. We are one of the newest teams in our system, and we are also structured slightly different than some of our other teams. We have a core team of approximately 11 members. Those are the faces right up there. We meet together monthly to determine training, build team agendas, go over staff suggestions, and to review or incorporate accessibility materials and services. We also hold monthly DAT team meetings in which all staff are invited to attend. But specifically, we ask that each branch or department send at least one representative so that they can bring the information from the meeting back to their location. We regularly hear from staff about how much they love attending DAT meetings.
Hi, everyone. I'm Gray. In 2024, shortly after forming the group, we sent out a survey to all staff to get a feel for everyone's understanding of disability issues and what the library offers. The survey also helped guide our group's direction and highlight the areas we needed to focus on. We received about 100 responses, many of which indicated that staff wanted to learn more about library resources and the best ways to serve our patrons with disabilities. From this, we developed action items and began planning trainings and guest speakers for staff education. This May, we sent out a follow-up survey to gauge the impact of the DAT's work over the last year, revisit what staff wants to see from our team, and help build further action items. The results of our most recent survey show that staff is enthusiastic about disability-focused programming and building connections with disabled communities and local organizations. Several staff members have been working to develop disability-focused programming and incorporate inclusion into existing programs. We've noted a significant drop in discomfort when working with disabled patrons, and we were also able to gauge the impact of our partnerships and presentations on staff members' day-to-day work. As part of our work on staff training, we've brought in trainers and presenters from outside agencies to educate staff on a variety of disability-related topics. We partnered with a local organization, the Common Ground Society, to present with their work connecting and supporting people with disabilities and their families at the 2024 Staff Day hosted by Becoming Independent. In addition, we host monthly meetings open to all staff, which typically involve a training or presentation. These have included trainings on existing library resources, as well as presentations by local agencies like the Braille and Talking Book Library, Memory Cafes by the Care Partners Initiative, the Earl Baum Center, part of Lighthouse for the Blind and Visually Impaired, Becoming Independent, Canine Companions, and the National Alliance on Mental Illness, with many more to come. We're also working to continue these partnerships beyond one-time presentations.
Hi, I'm Carrie. In celebration of Disability Pride Month, Sonoma County Library is proud to host a series of inclusive and engaging events that uplift the voices and experiences of people with disabilities. This month's programming includes an author's talk featuring author and educator Rachel Dina. She will share insights from her powerful memoir, The Butterfly Cage: Joy, Heartache, and Hope for Students with Disabilities and the Teachers Who Care for Them, drawing on her experiences as a deaf teacher and advocate. Additional programming includes the Common Ground Book Club, presented in partnership with the Common Ground Society, a podcast listening and discussion session centered around an episode from Telling It Our Way. It's a podcast that highlights authentic stories by individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. To support sensory kits, I mean, to support sensory accessibility across our branches, we are showcasing our sensory kit, which include headphones, fidgets, and other tools, and distributing take-and-make sensory kits that encourage hands-on exploration and inclusivity for all ages and abilities. Finally, we're honored to share the Disability Pride Resolution from the commission, reaffirming our collective commitment to inclusion advocacy. Looking ahead, the Disability Advocacy Team is focused on deepening our impact through sustainable partnerships, expanded programming, and continued community engagement. One important shift is moving away from a model of one-time presentations by outside agencies for building long-term collaboration. By forming meaningful relationships with local organizations, we can create, co-create programs, share resources, and maintain a consistent presence in the disability community. For example, you can see this picture of Barbara and Rachel at the Disability Expo. They attended this year, and next year, we planned to participate again. This year, they attended the Expo. Next year, we're gonna participate in the Expo, and we're gonna bring the Biblio Bus to showcase our inclusive offerings and connect directly with attendees. We're also expanding our efforts beyond designated celebration months by embedding accessibility and disability awareness into year-round programming. This includes sensory time and story times, inclusive craft kits, and ongoing accessible library activities. With these next steps, we are not just throwing our offerings, we are enhancing the way we serve sensory indignity, access, and belonging in everything we do.
Hi, everyone. My name is Phil Hoff. I'm the Branch Manager of the Windsor Regional Library. One thing that the Disability Advocacy Team has focused on has been creating tools and outputs to enhance accessibility services at Sonoma County Library. A few highlights include branch accessibility audits, a resource and information page on our staff SharePoint site, and an accessibility page on the Sonoma County Library website. Accessibility audits are tools that were created to identify which resources are available at each branch, identify gaps in resources, and then ensure that there is uniformity in how we are providing accessibility tools at all locations. And you'll see on the slide here what are called social stories, and these are a tool for members of the public to use to become familiar with a new space before arriving at it. So for folks that may have anxiety with the unknown, this is a tool to help ease them in exploring new areas. The staff SharePoint site is a go-to resource for all staff to find information on disability and accessibility services. A few highlights of what's available on there include training opportunities, DAT meeting recordings and transcripts, and a suggestion form for staff to provide feedback to the DAT regarding adding to or enhancing our services. The accessibility services page on our website provides information about our accessible collections, including audiobooks, large print materials, and some Braille items. It also provides information about services and tools available to the public, which include tabletop magnifiers, large print screen readers, and a video relay service for the deaf, hard-of-hearing, and speech-disabled. Members of the DAT really value being collaborative and responsive with our colleagues. To help us in that work, we've created several tools, which include a feedback form for staff and a staff survey. We'd like to highlight a few comments from the staff survey. You can see they're displayed on the screen. I'd like to give everyone a couple moments to read through those, but I'd like to highlight a few touchstones and words that really embody the work that we're doing, and that is empathy and community. On behalf of the Disability Advocacy Team, I'd like to thank you for your time and open up to any questions that you may have for us.
Any questions?
Thank you very, very much. We really appreciate being here, both that it represents material and then how to access material, which I, you know, obviously the question I was gonna ask you is what is your hope for 2026? Like, what is your big problem? Like, okay, you've got the lower-hanging fruit, let's go after the bigger fruit. Or I just wondered if you could talk about what you hope to accomplish next time or a year from now?
We're a fairly new team, as I said, and this past year, we really put a lot of focus. We're, none of us are experts in every single disability, right? There's a huge rainbow of disability. And so we tried to spend a lot of this year training and learning more and learning more about our organization. And part of that is that we've only touched the, you know, maybe half or fourth of the actual organizations that are in Sonoma County and learning what they do. And so we have some trainings planned coming up. As I said, we also are identifying more outreach opportunities, and we're really trying to put together that game plan now of where we go from here. But a lot of it is working more closely with the organizations that we have training with and kind of finding out, you know, what more resources can we get for the library? We're putting out our sensory kits on cards in the public for the first time. You can see them, I think, starting now for Disability Pride Month. So I've been with Phil, actually, at Becoming Independent, to the leaders of the group that go to the libraries, asking them their feedback and what they would like to see more in the library. So now I think it's a lot of going out to the community and asking the people that are coming what they would like to see from them, what we can do for them.
Thank you all for your presentation. I just wanted to say, I'm sure we all feel the same way. It's a very important team. And if you just started in 2024, I'm really impressed with all you've gotten done and the structure that you've added and the, you know, the surveys and everything. It's very impressive. And in a general sense, what we're seeing in national terms of the cruelty and and everything, it really, it's very moving to hear what Phil just said about point of empathy and community. Thank you. That's very important work that you're doing. Yeah.
Thanks for the presentation. I was really delighted to see the great work that you're doing. I had a question about the agencies in the county that you've reached out to. You mentioned several here. I'm wondering, what kind of response have you gotten from them? And what are some of the ways in which they're proposing to partner with the library?
I would say when we reach out, they answer right away, and we organize the time for them to come do a training with staff. And Memory Cafe is a great, the Memory Cafe is a great way to describe maybe one of them. Medicineo Library has kits, so we showed their memory kits at one of our meetings, and then we had them, the Memory Cafe folks come talk to all the staff. And from there, a lot of the staff started asking, like, how can we have memory cafes at the library? They tell us how to do it. They, you know, like, they make that connection with us, and if staff want to follow up, they can connect with them from their branch and create one of, like, from the gap. We also have the Braille Book Library come speak, and so from that, we got a lot of resources from them that we put in all our libraries. And we try to have somebody come from each branch and attend them so that there's at least one person at each library that has that knowledge and can tell the staff and refer them as well. So along with, like, creating those partnerships from specific branches with the actual people that do it, we almost always get resources from them as well to put in our libraries so that when folks come in, they can find themselves as well.
That's great, and I appreciate you reaching out to and collaborating with the wider community. I think it it's a very sound approach, but also, I think, really strengthens our relationship with the broader community. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Other comments?
Yeah.
I was wondering if any of this year's work made you think about how we're doing hiring in the library? You know, this is the other side of this, right? Are we being able to reach out? Are we getting diversity and disability in our employment? And I realize it's not your agenda, but I just wondered if they'll ever be, like, just a thought, like, hmm, can we we have to go both ways of the representation? I know that you're more focused on agents. I don't want to do that, but I'm just throwing, I'm really struck by that.
We are actually not allowed to ask about disability status in an interview, so unless a candidate discloses it, there's really no way for us to collect that data.
I meant more, not so much the asking, more the recruiting, but then, just like the how you recruit in hopes of asking back that, which is a different.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I just think that once we have them, I mean, how we determine is wonderful, and they really try to capitalize that. Once we have somebody that's working with us, we have reasonable accommodations and different ways that we can help. And so we actually did a training called staff so that they know what they can ask where we have urban homeless. But then that even can work well, just we have interactive process meetings, we have reasonable accommodations. So we really make every effort to help staff where they are and how they're going to make sure that they feel included and are well-protected.
I was at a meeting of the mayors and council members a month or so ago, and they were talking about a countywide program that they're putting together that talks about health, and they're working with all the cities in the county and that sort of thing. And I think sometimes, even though you all are very good about reaching out, they sometimes forget about the library. And so I wonder if you are, if you are in touch with the county, because I spoke to the gentleman who presented and said library. And he said, we've worked with the library. I believe we worked with Anne, which I believe is probably him, and which was a while ago. So are you all working with the county? Come on up. So are you all working with the county? Come on up. And Noah, I mean, Noah is a perfectly.
Excuse me, our presenter for more internal disability advocacy team meeting is a representative from the disability legal services down the building, actually on Inceena. And they have such an incredible ring of service, but they have been working on this sort of hub for folks. Where they, they have something come to them and say, for example, I applied to be on disability permanently and I was denied. What do I do now? When that person shows up and says that to the folks in the office, they immediately take them and they don't let go in basically every way until that person is completely served. And when I heard about that, just in a kind of one-on-one meeting with this gentleman to set up the training with us, I said, can we be part of this hub? This is amazing. Like, that's, that's the library. You know, it's like, you wouldn't want to do that. Yes? So we're going to meet with him and his founder at the county to learn more about what does that mean to be part of the hub and just how can we integrate even more? So really, there's so much exciting stuff coming up that I can't wait.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Rachel. Tell me the name of, tell me the name of the organization again.
Yeah, it's the Disability Services Legal Center. D E S L B. And it's in Santa Rosa. Uh, the gentleman who's going to present with us is one of their main advocates. His name is Jordan Rico. And we met them at the Disability Expo and Barbara and I walked around and talked to all the different organizations. Their team was there and I immediately went over and said, what do you guys do? Tell me everything. Let's be best friends.
Thanks.
I was going to do a quick shout out that, you know, we're talking about Sonoma County Library as a whole with a lot of these things that we're doing. But the individual branches are doing a lot. They're all like within their own communities. And just a very brief example of that, I mentioned that I, Phil and I presented as becoming independent of all of the leaders that they take out all of our libraries. And the manager of those leaders wrote me specifically to say that the Sedastical and the Roseland Library, which is wonderful to work with and to take their groups. And I hear great things about it all the time. So even though we're talking about this as like whole and all the county libraries, you know, what we do together, I really do want to give that shout out to like the individual branches that are all coming folks in every day and making those connections with not only becoming independent, but with, you know, any of the other organizations that are coming in and having that specific relationship with that branch. And they all do it every single day in their location. So I really want to give a shout out. You know, not only these three locations that are represented here, but all of the libraries and the work that they do every day.
And they also collaborate. And so you know what Phil's doing and, and the other branches. So do the branches know what each other is doing?
I mean, we talk about it at the end of the week, but it's just kind of woven into their everyday work. I mean, Phil can tell you, you, so many groups come into the library every single day. I'm sure Rose could tell you, I'm sure that, Carrie could tell you, and all of them could. And they do talk about it in our meetings, but it's just everything that they do this.
Another thing we need to brag about.
Yes.
Right? Okay. So I think I saw another hand up. Fred, did you have your hand up? No? Any, and we love your dog. We love your dog. Is she? They? He? Okay. He's not very excited, but.
She.
She. Thank you so much for your presentation. Public comment? Um, we don't have to vote on this one. Thank you. Do we have such an advocacy team for aging, for the aging population?
Uh, we do not.
We do not.
We do have an adult services team, though. They do the programming for adults in the library.
We do focus on that, but your doctor services.
Okay, yeah. And Barbara says the adult services team does focus on the aged community, whatever that is.
Great. Fabulous. Okay, then we are moving on to library reports.
Is the mic still on? Good. Okay. So I want to give a few updates. So in the packet, it says that the Petaluma Library is kind of scheduled to be open on July twenty-eighth. Uh, we still, we still do not have a date. We still do not. We are waiting on an inspection. And until we get the green light, we don't want to choose that a day in case it's not going to happen by then. So we're hoping we will find out, is it by Friday? At the end of the week? Monday, next Monday we'll find out. And then the Hoover Dam patio is complete and we're waiting to set a date for ribbon cutting as well. So we're.
The bathrooms are not yet open, no.
So we have some building projects that are still, you know, ongoing and we hope to get them wrapped up soon. So, I mean, that's kind of the update. I know we had a really good showing of Commissioner Astin Hillsburg Regional Library. And thank you, Commissioner Goldberg and Doyle Green and Mackenzie for showing up. It was a very well attended. If you haven't been in the new library, please do visit. It is really beautiful. And we also have a great story in the Petaluma Artist Career about the renovation of Petaluma. So when it does want to be opened, we hope that you will all, that ribbon cutting as well.
Questions?
Not questions, but I wanted to just give a shout out. Phil Huff, our Windsor Regional Library Branch Manager is here. And you noted that he had completed a year-long leadership development program. Kudos to you, Phil. And I was just really happy to see that the digital literacy program was so expansive and so well-attended. It's great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Thank you very much. Six point two, budget and finance reports.
Hello, I'm here to see if you have any additional questions.
Nina, did a in-depth background information for us? So do we have any questions? I am seeing no questions from the commission. Any comments from the public? Did I ask for public comment after the disability? You don't think so? Asking for public comment for this one, for the budget and finance. Okay, no public comment? Thank you very much. And is there public comment about the, about the disability programs? Nothing online? Okay. So sorry about that. Then we are on to library advisory boards, Sonoma Library Foundation, Friends of the Library. Any official or unofficial representatives that want to say anything? Okay. I'm not seeing anything. And now we're moving on to the consent calendar. These matters include routine financial and administrative actions that may be approved by a consensus. Any commissioner or member of the public may request that an item be removed from the calendar and have it placed with the action items. The commission will approve the minutes of the prior meetings in summary format. Does anybody object to any of the items on the consent calendar? And does the public or a member of the commission? Seeing none? Do you have a motion?
I'd like to move approval.
Barbara Evers.
Read out the names so they can talk about it.
No. Send agenda, I mean, class just.
Give it for Barbara a second. All right. Then we are going to call the role, Commissioner Cahill.
Yes.
Mr. Alkin.
Yes.
Mr. Anger.
Yes.
Mr. Bulver.
Yes.
Mr. Green.
Yeah.
Mr. Heavenridge.
Yes.
Mr. McKenzie.
Yes.
Mr. Paul.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Fabulous. All right.
Now we have some action motions.
This is the election of commission officers, chair and vice chair for the beginning from August first, twenty twenty-five, ending July thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. And so, let's see, I have to find my. Last time we did these separately. Do I have a motion? Sorry.
I'll read the draft motion.
I'm sorry?
I'll read the motion.
Okay. Do I have a second? Second. Okay. And is this for both or just for chair?
It's for both. It's.
There you go.
That's a thing. Uh, I move that Sarah Lagos be elected as chair and Brooke Green be elected as vice chair of the Sonoma County Library Commission for the term beginning August first, twenty twenty-five and ending July thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Do I have a second? David? All right. Any comments? Any member, any comments from the members of the public?
I have a comment.
Please.
I I, I don't typically want to bring religion into our discussions, but in our religious heritage, there's an expression, "Lador, lador," from generation to generation, meaning from strength to strain. And it just, it comes to mind today. Uh, I, I know Brooke and I talked about it and I, will you say something later as well? But in, in supporting these two wonderful commissioners who have stepped forward, I also want to acknowledge your exceptional leadership. You've been so wonderful and the, the, the words escape me, but the feeling is, is so deep and I'm so grateful to you for your leadership and so grateful that Sarah and Brooke are stepping up to continue. I really do feel like we are going from, from strength to strain. So it's with, with great enthusiasm that I would be able to support this motion.
Well, since Andy got the ball rolling, I, I want to thank you, Deborah, for the inspiration you've given me, the knowledge that you impart to all of us and your passion for all things library and your advocacy on behalf of Sonoma County Library and all libraries. And I have learned so much and really appreciate you. And I'm so glad you will continue to be on the commission with us.
Thank you. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yeah, I, I guess this is the time to say this. I wanted to thank you, Deborah, for four years of leadership. And I, I don't know that anyone really understands what it's, how time-consuming it is, all the extra meetings and the emails, the public appearances. You know, it's even a regular commissioner like us, there's always something on our calendar to do. And as a, the chair, it's constant and you've got, you know, ten other commissioners to deal with and return their calls and answer their questions and stuff. And it's just a lot. It's a lot to carry. It's a lot of time. And on top of it, you've done leadership in California and on the national level. And I think, you know, again, I think we're all trying to express that it's really been a big load that you've carried. And I really appreciate all the effort that you've put in.
Thank you.
I'm probably going to cry, so I'm going to try not to.
I'm not dead.
I know, I know. But, you know, I am also very grateful for your leadership, especially as the new library director. It's been invaluable. So that's what I'm saying.
Well, I think we're delighted to have you and, and really it, it, it's been an joy to work with all of you. But I'm not dead yet and I'm not going anywhere for another year. So we're going to vote. Wait a minute, you're not going to let, we're not done. You're going to, so more. Okay, go for it. I just wanted to say, as a relatively new commissioner, how welcoming you were to me and how much you had meetings with me and trying to get me up to speed. I was really, really grateful because it's actually a fairly complicated thing to jump into and try to understand both financially and otherwise and how to be an appropriate commissioner. So I really, really appreciate that time and you're always there to answer questions. And it just was, I knew who to go talk to. It, it really made a difference in the first few months for me. So thank you very much. Thank you very much. Moving on. Okay, we're going to take a vote. Commissioner Cahill.
Yes.
Mr. Alkin.
Yes.
Mr. Anger.
Yes.
Mr. Bulver.
Yes.
Mr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Heavenridge.
Yes.
Mr. McKenzie.
Yes.
Mr. Paul.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yay.
And I will make it unanimous and I'm glad to see we didn't have any extensions this time. Okay, so now we are. Let's see. Um, you've got my chair report. And June was the month I went to the International Public Library Fundraising Conference and also just got back from ALA and there was lots of information. So I will make sure that you have a full report in the, in the August commission report. And then, but also I think that if there are, if there are things that, that commissioners and commissioner reports is next, if there are things that commissioners would like to report on or would like, would like staff to report on, do, do touch base with Sarah. Make sure that, you know, if you've got, if, and, and I've asked Lisa to put together, we've seen it before, I think, but a list of what, what we are celebrating every month, what resolutions we usually use. You know, we often, we often refer to a number of, you know, we have a number of resolutions every year that are, that are pretty standard because we're so passionate about it. But if we have a calendar that we know that is coming up, then if you all have specific information or you've done some research that you want to share, then you can get it to, get it to Lisa so that the rest of the commission sees it. Commissioner, Commissioner Anger, this morning sent some information about, about disabilities, the disability month, disability pride, and so we'll pass that along as well. But if you all, if you all have other things that you're interested in, please make sure that Sarah knows, that Lisa knows, that Erica knows, things that are important on the commission agenda. Commission reports. Does anybody have anything to add to their commission reports? Mr. Alkin?
I have a correction. I always hesitate to put things in the report that haven't happened yet, but will have happened or should have happened by the time we meet. And in this case, I had planned and hoped to attend the finance committee meeting on June twenty-third, but in fact was not able to. So my apologies.
We managed. Anybody else? Any, I don't think we really need public comments on the commission reports. Let's see, committee liaison, financial committee report. Commissioner McKenzie, anything to add?
No, I would just say we did spend quite a bit of time talking about the Rincon Valley renovation at the finance committee meeting. And I did put in the minutes that we were going to have a presentation tonight, which I understand has been delayed for a while. So I just wanted to point that out because it doesn't quite match our, that.
I thought we were going to edit that out. Oh, well. Okay. Thank you.
I thought it was on there.
You're, I'm sure you're right. All right. Is there anything you wish to add to the Historic Records Commission report? Anything to the foundation report? And if you have an interest in serving on a committee or serving as a liaison, do touch base with Sarah. She probably will either renew appointments or make some new appointments. And that's, that's something that happens at this time of year as well. See. Old business, we had, we're still waiting for a staff report on.
The legal unions, yeah.
Yeah. And then also on climate.
Uh, climate resilience or climate sustainability, that will be at the August commission meeting as with the legal agenda item. And also the, we hope the MOU, the union is supposed to be ratifying that in July. So depending upon the timeline, it may be on August commission. We're going to try to do our best. But, you know, we'll see. And then the Rincon Valley presentation is postponed until we, you know, we got feedback from the finance committee that we are going to review the proposal and, and, you know, decide what we're going to do with the project. So until we have some information, we will keep you posted.
There's something else. Any other suggestions or questions about old or new business? My goodness, we all want to get out in the summer, don't we? My goodness, we all want to get out in the summer, don't we? Your hand is going up. There it is. Commissioner McKenzie's.
Can't let a vacuum like that go by without answering the question. I did a little note here that I forgot to bring up at the um, an Eve's report about the um, Library Foundation Board meeting. Um, I see that Craig Palmer did uh, present to them about reasons for the twenty twenty four, twenty five fundraising shortfall as compared to the original goal. And not to put you on the spot, but I wondered if there was, there were some obstacles or something that we should know about or yeah, any, any additional information about that?
I'm not sure we can talk about that if it's not an agenda item. So is there an agenda item of today that we can tuck that under? Who answered the question?
It's on, it's in the report, but.
It's in the found, it's in the foundation liaison report that we submitted.
Okay. If you. Just, just in general.
Uh, thank you for that question. Um. I'm making a table. Let's hurry up. Uh, this year, there were a number of things that happened in the course of the year uh, that delayed things that were going to happen. And one of them was the release of the naming opportunities. Funding opportunities and, you know, in our plan, that was going to be in the year of April, May and June. That was pushed back a little bit. Didn't know what the library was going to be. We couldn't make the naming opportunities until we had it for. Those naming options are not involved in the fall and the shortfall was actually down now. And when I presented it to the uh, we, we spent a lot of time developing this year's budget. And we don't set budgets as plug numbers. Every, every budget is supported by a zero uh, funding thing. And that particular sum was supposed to come from the activities. Now you'll see that all the next meeting hours, some people.
Thank you for that.
Um, as a back, I I don't think I can adjourn the meeting without saying, um, what are the certain. And I learned a long time ago that when I, when I moved to San Francisco, like that, the Defense Department, I thought national policy.
And national policy. And then I moved to San Francisco and realized that, you know, politics and policies are bloodsport, certainly in California. And uh, and then, and then people reminded me, oh, the state's involved. And so it 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 finally realized that that food chain, that chain of being goes from local all the way to national. And it's always important for us to for us to remember all of those things. And you all have been uh, voices at all of those levels. And uh, and and we're very fortunate in Sonoma County, fortunate um, uh, in our staff, fortunate in management, fortunate in the people who live here. And we all have different opinions, of course, but um, but but I think um, the majority of people believe in Sonoma County that um, that that free people read freely, right? And uh, and and be fine for that. And but but we're, as I say, very fortunate and um, and I think that we can't forget that. So uh, midterms are coming up. There are a lot of things that happened in Washington. The FCC, uh, uh, I probably should have reported this. I don't think it's in my, my commission report. But the FCC did say in fact that the E rate was, we could, libraries can use E rates. But there were a lot of things that that it said that that are going to have an impact on libraries because it's going to have an impact on federal funding, state funding and all that. And um, and I think moving, moving toward, one of the things we should do is really remember that, just as the staff has talked about today, we have to, we have to look up, we have to look out, we have to work together and we have to look forward. Um, and we as a commission, we, we know that you guys are focusing, focusing on the things that you're doing to help everybody in Sonoma County and beyond, of course. But but our job is to, is to take that energy and and think about, you know, what can it be in five years? What can we, how can we, how can we serve the the people of Sonoma County even better? And um, and and that's what we, I think, are trying to do. And a lot of stuff that's going on, we have to pay attention to that is outside of our, you know, outside of our ballpark, outside of our um, our, our, our county limits. We, we all have to make sure that we are at least taking a little bit of time to think about what's going on at the state, what's going on at the national. You know, how many of your colleagues don't know what the library budget is? How many, how many of our friends groups don't know what the library budget is? Don't know what, don't know that things are happening at the national level that are going to have a significant impact on on what we do. So I think that, I think that since leadership is sitting here, please remember that and remind us, remind the commission, if we're not paying attention to something, um, and we'll try to remind you of the same thing. And uh, and truly, it's been an honor to to be the chair for this commission. And with that, yeah, Barbara.
I'm wondering if you would like to um, comment on some of the highlights of your four years in the chair position.
Well, we renewed a ballot, you know, we renewed a tax measure. I think that is pretty swell. Um, we actually have eleven commissioners. I think that's pretty swell. We have a great staff, the um, who who is, they're concerned about their, they're concerned about their colleagues, but but they're, they're more concerned about uh, about the the patrons and the non-patrons, the people that we want to come into the library. Uh, and uh, and I think that um, one of the things that that uh, I I see that we can, we we can help the friends figure out. You know, I was having a conversation um, at the, I don't mean to babble, but I was having a conversation down at the Public Library Fundraising Conference and um, and so I've seen so many friends groups or foundations that spend years trying to help the library achieve a goal, whether it's a tax measure, whether it's another funding measure, whether it's a building to be built and that sort of thing. And then, and then the building gets built and the library staff is focused on getting that finished and focused on moving on to that. And the group that has helped get them there, then suddenly they think, what do we, what do we do now? And the library forget, and not this library, of course, never this library, but many libraries forget to have the conversation with their friends groups, with their advisory boards, with their uh, you know, with their foundations about, so what's next? And I think that uh, we have, we have achieved the very interesting thing in the last couple of years. And and we don't have to live in a scarcity model of thinking anymore. And so one of the things that um, that I think it's, it's important for us to hear from staff and um, and as you, as you meet the community. And we also are uh, talking to the community too, but but it's important for us to look forward and to, you know, and to figure out uh, what does the best Sonoma County library system look like and how can we all work together? And uh, um, and and I think I I would hope that 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 was one of the things that I have brought to the commission to try to get people to think about the importance of where we are in a, in a bigger food chain, where we are in a bigger system. Um, and I and and there have been a number of other things, but but honestly, um, just as a commission chair, I just, I just uh, organized this meeting. It's not I can't take responsibility for all of the wonderful things that the staff has done and that we voted on. So with that, I'll call it adjourned.